Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the land of the United States of America and to the United States with the nation under God, indivisible, and with the great mercy of God.
Roll call, Justin. Brugman.
Here.
Here. Jefferson, here. Bishop.
All right. Call this meeting to order at 7:01. It's by Monday evening. Just to remind you that the City of Grant is videotaping this council meeting. And also the City of Grant abhors by the Nebraska Open Meeting Act in conducting business. A copy of the Nebraska Open Meeting Act is on display in the meeting room on the little court board there, as required by Nebraska State law. Did everyone get a chance to review the agenda?
Yes.
All right.
We accept action on the agenda from May 22, 2023.
May second, Matt. All right, second.
All right. Charity moves and sounds second to accept action on the May 22, 2023 agenda. Any discussion? Sam, how do you vote?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Motion carried. That's all right. I knew what you were thinking.
Yeah.
Review and action on prior meeting minutes for May 8, 2023.
Move to set action on prior meeting minutes for May 8, 2023 and waive the meeting.
I second the, um, May 8th. Right? I can second. I can. All right. I second the May 8, 2020, 2023, sorry, meeting minutes and waive the, um, reading. Any discussion?
Charity, how do you vote? Yes.
Sam?
I'm staying.
Lisa, I vote yes. And it fails due to lack of plan. So it'll be on the next agenda. All right, communications. That was in the, um, packet. Um, there is a packet in the binder for those of you who haven't been to a meeting before. All right, standing committee reports. Sam?
None.
Charity?
None.
All right, thank you.
Financial, Jeffy?
I wanted to note that we had, um, updated our C E with Adams Bank and Trust. And the interest rate now is 4.5, um, maturing in April of 2023. And then, um, on the airport one, I know we kind of touched base on it. The last financial packet that we got the final, um, proceeds on the access road and the county payment also included there for the access road. And, um, Martin Buildings, we had our trunk last month for the materials. And the final payment is a right over claim. So that product that was all court is completed.
All right. Please note that we accept the financial debt presented. Do you have any public comment today?
I'd like, Sam?
If you're able and, um, if, uh, state your name and your address.
I just, uh, like, like this council for all the things we've accomplished during these past few years. Uh, I remember it was two or three years ago and I said, we gotta get something done with these streets. I said, they're shambles. These guys here, after a blink of eyes, they wouldn't be here tomorrow. They ignore the seven o'clock morning whistle. They ignore the five o'clock whistle. That air makes fantastic.
Thank you.
Now, thank you for planning to get that done. Thank you for the other wonderful improvements. Park is great. Swimming pool is a tremendous addition to this town. Uh, it's, we got a nice park and I know the city puts a lot into that. We had kind of a flavor change. Our housing is improving in this town. We're replacing homes and a lot of people on their own. Our improvement looks at our house. Grant was looking better all the time. And thank you for the different committees that you put to work on, do all this. I did this thing before I was mayor and I was on the city council. And oh man, well, they ruled me along with the other people on the council. There's a lot of abuse. You've got to remember the people just illustrated a lot. And so the easiest target is the government. Do you want to start with the federal government, the state government and city government? Or back up the other way, you're just going to take some blasts that aren't necessary, I don't think. And I know the job that you guys have done and I'd say we're on a positive move to the front. So thank you. Thank Andrea and Kim for the job they've done. And thank you for the research you've done as mayor.
Thank you.
Uh, giving through that. I see you're, I don't know if you're gonna thank you guys administration here. You do an ad. Uh, I'm an ad fan though. And, uh, so thank you for that. Thank you for keeping Grant moving in the right direction. Uh, these things are, all of these things are little things. And when you get right down to it, little things aren't that important. I just get up with a grateful heart and I get up again. And, uh, you know, you, you got people, you got dressed tonight to get pressure insurance. I, I vouch for him. I know he does a good job in his business. He's the chairman of the hospital board, which is a big look, if you're not aware of that. And so if I get a vote, I vote yes. And I thank, uh, Jim Brugman, Brugman and the Sheriff Department. We looked in starting City of Grant, three, four months. We figured, well, if you got to get a minimum of two cars, you can't get a minimal four people, you're probably going to double uh, the expenses that Brugman's got to share as office to turn. And Jim Brugman has helped me a lot in both on penal home and just various other things. And we appreciate the department. And I think it's a no brainer to go back into contract with him. But thank you for moving us. I think you're as progressive as we've had in the city council that we've had over the previous years here. So keep up the good work and.
We've got two people in my place that we totally give votes. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you so much for.
Anything else?
For giving us a good time.
I would like to sit down now.
Thank you. Anyone else for a public comment? All right. There may be no unfinished business. We'll move on to new business. Action and discussion on approval agreement of professional services between Miller and Associates Consulting Engineers P C and the City of Grant for the rewrite revision to the City of Grant zoning ordinance and subdivision code. Also need to be authorized to sign. Any questions? Tom, was this a pretty straightforward, typical or any?
Yeah, everyone's looking really.
Any concerns?
Out of the ordinary, so.
Okay. And we've worked a lot with Miller and Associates. So I assume it's very similar to.
I read the proposals even though I wasn't able to be here last time. So, um, I thought it passed. So make the action to approve the agreement. Professional services to Miller Associates and the City of Grant for rewriting revisions to the City of Grant, uh, Grant zoning ordinance and subdivision code. Now authorize the mayor to sign.
I second.
Sam moved. Charity second that we approved the agreement between Miller and Associates and the City of Grant. Any discussion? Sam?
Yes.
Charity?
Yes. And I vote yes.
Motion carried. Authorizing the mayor to sign. Forgot to add that. Action and discussion on the interlocal agreement for law enforcement services between Perkins County and the City of Grant. Also, the mayor needs to authorize to sign this agreement also. I believe there's, um, pretty typical to the last year's with a 4% increase, which I think is very fair. Considering the cost of fuel and insurance and I don't know. What has it gone up?
Yeah. Not everything got worth that.
Yeah, yeah. Everything's gone. So I thought four, I was expecting more than that. So I was pretty satisfied with the 4%.
Um, I moved set action on interlocal agreement for law enforcement service between Perkins County and the City of Grant. Authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Charity moved and Sam second that we accept the interlocal agreement for law enforcement services between Perkins County and the City of Grant. Authorizing the mayor to sign. Any discussion?
Charity, how do you vote? Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
I vote yes also. Motion carried. Okay, this will be the first reading, um, on ordinance number 18 dash 11 dash 01. Amending the revised municipal city of Grant or municipal code of the City of Grant, Perkins County, Nebraska. And I think it highlighted the, the change that was needed. But if you would go ahead and read that for us, Jeffy.
Ordinance number 23 dash 05 dash 01 and ordinance by the mayor and council of the City of Grant, Perkins County, Nebraska. Amending the revised municipal code of the City of Grant, Perkins County, Nebraska. Ordinance number 18 dash 11 dash 01 by adding a new subparagraph D in chapter seven, public utilities. Article two, water department, section seven dash two one six, unsafe connection prohibited. Backflow prevention devices required.
Okay. Thank you very much. And that will be on the agenda for the next meeting. So we'll plenty of time to review that. And if you have questions or concerns, um, please bring them to Ed or Billy.
Thank you.
Well, um, we're adding this because of the, when we were at our annual inspection, they advised us that we needed to get more of that included in our ordinance for the prior year because they're not getting all of that rich and that. And we're going to need to force it stronger at some point.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much for the additional information. The next item on the agenda is request to be placed on the agenda submitted by John.
Sully.
Flowers. Thank you. Uh, and the topic is noise ordinance. If you want to go ahead up here and, um, introduce yourself.
Well, my name is Sean Sowers. Um, it was brought to my attention that the noise ordinance here in town is pretty vague. And like I had discussions with Ed and I had discussions with Burdeman about it. And right now the ordinance just says that any offensive, any sound that is offensive to the senses. And that really could be anything. I mean, a chainsaw run down 110 decibels, that could be offensive to the senses. I would like the council to look at putting a time on that. And I have a couple of other towns that have this ordinance put into theirs. I found Imperials and I found Lincoln's. They're about the two easiest ones to find. Oh, my, I have copies if you guys would like to.
Yeah, absolutely.
So the top one's Imperials.
Thank you.
And then Lincoln, they actually have a decibel level for theirs. I don't think we need that personally. I would just like to see where we could get like Imperial has from 10 to 6 a.m. I mean, 6 a.m. is probably a little too early. Most towns I talked to, they said seven to 10. That's when you can make your noise. That people cannot just be like, we'll have the things that.
Right.
And, you know, with the concrete going on downtown, that could be, the city could be in violation of this right now. So I would like to see if the city council would put something in that would give a premium or where somebody could be making noise.
That, that, that's a fair request.
You'd be happy with seven to 10.
Oh, yeah.
Right. I would probably like to say like, I don't know how that would work like with Fourth of July. So it would have to be in like an exemption. I, I think that's probably why it's.
That was mine. Yep.
Why it's been vague because then when you have special celebrations.
Right, right.
Then if you have that seven to 10 in there and the week before the Fourth of July, there's no way to enforce that.
Right. And like Imperial has in where it has, can be approved by the city administrator to have a special amendments to that, which I mean your Fourth of July, you know, the concert for the county fair.
Or, uh, someone's special celebration.
There's the, and I understand why it's vague. But at the same time, like, anybody can really turn you
Oh, yeah.
in for anything.
Yeah, I think a lot more at 10 o'clock in the morning is normal. A lot more at 10 o'clock at night is not.
Right, right.
Yeah, you know, and I would have a problem in my neighborhood. You know, that's a normal sound in town at 10:00 in the morning. It's not a normal sound at 10:00 at night.
Exactly.
Yep.
So I'd like to see if the city would put an amendment to theirs to put a time in.
I, I think that's a fair request.
Yeah. Take some time for that process to go.
Yeah, it's time to get.
I have watched that.
Let's take. Right, right. I, three readings.
Yeah, and I agree.
I'm a worker city, so I understand how, how long it takes to get something.
I agree the decibel thing with the heart of the work. Especially with like, you know, one neighbor, it's, you know, 80 decibels to see left and then another neighbor running. And who has to, then it would be a hassle for the sheriff to have to go out and edit that all the time. So.
Right.
Very good. Well, I appreciate you coming in and speaking with us.
Right.
Any other questions?
I don't think we can cover it. We, you know, sort of talk to a lawyer and see what we can do to make it, you know, clearer and also accommodate those things. Uh, you know, Fourth of July and the fair and that kind of stuff. Thank you so much.
We're going along with. All right. Very good, guys. Do we, do we need a motion or just?
No, I'm not.
Okay, okay, very good. All right. The thing we wait for every year.
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
Let me tell you, ribbety.
Yeah, ribbety stuff.
We leave them, I vote yes.
Thank you very.
Thank you. You healed up.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm only going to go an hour. Thank you.
All right, Jeff, thank you very much to come and educate us once again.
Oh, I, yes, very much. So it's, I hope those version for you guys. Uh, that's, that's hard. Hand out, um, 85, uh, page proposal, probably not something we want to go through line by line. So I'm going to get the highlights and the long notes.
What?
Yeah, it's, uh, it's exciting stuff. I know insurance is, is awesome, right? Right now with all the stuff we have to deal with. That's exactly which one to talk about today. But, um, well, I don't know with a, with a lead like that, uh, with Joe Long giving me the, giving me that kind of, that's going to be a couple of bucks to. And then John, we were thinking we were partying all night here. So we're not doing that. So I'm not, so in any of this. So I am Jeff Steel with the Hometown Agency. For those who don't know who I am, um, every year our insurance renewal for the City of Grants is in June. Okay? Um, we try to put together numbers as fast as we can. Uh, this year, uh, it was about mid-May and we've been trying to find to tune some, some ideas and and try to come up with some solutions each year to, uh, to different problems. Um, I said the, uh, airport ones that, uh, Ed, Ed and Jesse are valuable and rates. And the boys are great to help me with stuff. Um, so we make sure we're turning the right stuff, make sure our stuff is up to date. We're not missing something. Uh, valuations on certain pieces of equipment. Uh, we try to get those fine tuned. Uh, so we're not paying for stuff that's, uh, quite frankly, yeah, exactly. Uh, and so that's, that's kind of a big thing there. And then there's other types of risk management stuff that they allow us, they help us out with. So with that, I am going to jump right into it. Um, I have my copy here and, and like I said, really, this is really just kind of a breakdown and we're going to go through, I'm more of a conceptual guy. I don't want to talk about things as opposed to just 85 pages and then we're getting lost halfway through. So the first page is just the cover sheet. And on the back of it is the breakdown of what each division is going to cost. That's the annual premium. And, um, I'm going to go through each one of these sections because it's worth explaining and, and where does the bulk of the premium come? Obviously for our exposure is what? These things right here, buildings, stuff that we own, structures across the entire town. But keep in mind, what all encapsulates the city is we also have an airport, swimming pool, the golf course, um, wood thumb, the golf course out there.
Why is that thing hit?
And I did, it's got a big old hole sign on it. Good thing. And, and, and it is actual hail. It's not just bad golf shots. Uh, but it is, it is actually, and that has been our big, um, actually our exposure the last couple of years from a claim standpoint on our property. Um, I was looking back at, at, uh, at our history and, 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 and our policies have paid out. I mean, we just, we just dumped an asterisk for Dewey Martin, right? Uh, or Steway Martin, Martin Building. Uh, we just finally got that claim wrapped up. And if you guys remember that, we actually stretched that over two years. It was two separate claims. We got hit with one and then turned, got hit again, um, because the, they got hit with hail. And then the actual, uh, the pavilion was, was damaged. We got high winds. So we had last year. So we've dropped, uh, our insurance barriers dropped about 60, 60 K out there over the last, um, uh, three years probably. So, um, you're guys' property. And that's the thing, uh, you look at this page right here and you're going, what is this? Well, you guys have two separate blankets. And there are certain buildings and structures that are on one blanket and, and then there's another building, a structure on another blanket along with personal property. And you'll see those numbers there. And if you add those two together, it's nine million, $698 and 884 cents. Uh, 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 884 dollars even. Last year, that number was eight million, 461, 239. So it's an increase of 1.237 million basically, in, in, of increase in buildings. Now, we go, Jeff, we didn't add billion buildings. No. And some of you are probably seeing this on your homeowner's insurance right now. The cost of what it's to insure the actual structure is increasing, increasing dramatically. That's a 15% increase, folks. That's what that is. That, that's why I said, I mean, I can put all those numbers in, and this actually part of your guys' other proposals, like 35 pages. So, I mean, that's, that's where it's at because we have each structure. And we can, I'm more than happy to provide that to the council. I run through it with Jesse and Ed to make sure we have the, the buildings and structures on the policy. Um, but we basically have two separate, uh, blankets. One of them has replacement costs, which means in a particle damage situation, um, we, we don't depreciate out anything. And that is the larger one. That is the 5.7 million. The smaller one is our actual cash value where there would be some depreciation for losses. Um, for example, the, I'll give you, I'll give you an example of how it can affect the claim. The baseball field fence was on an actual cash value basis. And basically it was wear and tear. It wore it down. The wind didn't finally finish it off. But it was mainly, uh, because there are all those holes. We just basically brought it out. Um, now that's, that's going to be added to our blanket now with the new fence and it'll probably be a replacement cost endorsement. I don't see that. So we'll put it in today's dollars. We'll put it back on the, on the boat, on the program. Um, let me, let me give you some quick numbers. The airport. Last year, all the buildings out there and personal property, we had 2.35 million out there. This year, we now have 2.55 million out there. So that's a $200,000 increase. We didn't do any improvements on it. That's just a toss of the inflation. I know we were talking about inflation and everything going up. Um, another, the huge one is, uh, we've been working and, and Ed and I addressed this last year with Jason Bishop. We had him put together some new numbers on the substation. We had the substation grossly underinsured. Um, it was insured at, at 1.35 million. It is that, that to replace that unit on top of there. Any guess? Any want to guess? What a cost. Well, you're Midwest boy. You should know this, right? What? It's actually 2 million dollars to replace it. 2 million bucks is what it's, is what it's a cost to replace that substation in today's dollar. So that's, that's a $640,000 increase. So that's about half of our increase. And then all the others start from the courts over the, over the, uh, so that's where 15% increase comes from. That's just in, in our cost of insurance. So if our cost of insurance per hundred last year was, uh, 50 cents per hundred, and even if it's 50 cents per hundred this next year, you're going to pay more premium. Does that make sense? Because your valuations have expanded. No different than your homeowner's policy. If you, if you insured for 200,000 last year and now it's 250,000, you're going to see an increase in premium. Um, remember the one big kicker too is that we have $10,000 going in the hailer back there per occurrence. So if that happens, was another reason why we did, uh, total out and turn in the claim on the billion dollar course before we were subject to that biggest deductible at that time. So there you go. 2,500 all the other occurrences. So we, we catch fire, it's 2,500. When inhales, it's a $10,000. So that is our increase, um, on the building valuation. There was a rate increase on top of that. And if you're punching numbers there, you have 15% increase. Overall increase in the property section alone is almost 20%. Below 20% actually. So your entire increase on your policy, it was right there. And so we'll get into a harder number to begin than how I compared the last couple of years. Any questions? Next section is inland marine. And this is where I make my joke about, but we don't have any, we have boats here. That's how much money we take from tax collectors here. The, we have our own private yachts here at the City of Grant. No, inland marine is physical damage for non-licensed rogue, uh, pieces of equipment. For example, the old Elgin street sweeper that's running around town would be covered in gold. $200,000, uh, is what we have it insured for on a physical damage type situation. Um, physical damage is covered underneath the inland marine, underneath the, the, that part of the, of the policy. The liability though, when they're up and down the streets is going to be on the auto section. So it's a little bit of a different type of twist. Of course, the normal auto, just like your guys' auto insurance is covered underneath there. Um, but we have, we have portable equipment that runs to and from job sites that doesn't stay on our property. And in order to get physical damage, we have to put it on the inland marine. That's our big ticket item there. We also have the new Holland tractor. Um, and all of those are subject to a thousand dollar dollar. Okay. So that, that per occurrence. And so we get two pieces of damages. We, we have, I think that was all. So with that being said, that, that, that takes care of that. Now you see we have fine arts. We do have fine arts in this town. We, we do. And that is our, that's the children reading bronze, uh, statue down by the, uh, library. So that's $36 a year insurance. So it is on here. Electronic data processing. And I'm going to go to the next section because that all kind of ties into each other. If you look at the next page and Charity, how is like, how is cyber liability? Is there a risk anywhere around for cyber liability? Is that something that jumps out at you? Don't feel bad. Um,
It says that we should keep paying for it.
And you're a number. You never just exactly a couple of years ago and we're all going, we really have insurance and stuff. This is the, this is the new deal. This is, this is the, uh, industry hot button, if you will, right now is cyber liability. And I'm, I'm gonna say right now, looking through this policy, there's not a lot of coverage here. There really isn't. Um, and it's $1,200 a year. And then, and like I said, that's been kind of the, as the, uh, we have basically their, their, their their base policy is what we did. And cyber extortion, that's the one you read about on, on the news, right? That's where they, where they steal the information and then they say, we're going to, we'll sell it back to you. We've only had $25,000 of coverage there. Um, and really our, our, our response expense and some of those other types of things, we have a hundred thousand. Um, but defense liability, not a lot. Keep in mind, we do have, uh, an umbrella behind this. But, but these are, I mean, that doesn't go with cyber extortion or any of those types of things. Those are base limit situations. So, um, our like, our electronic data processing is we have the stuff that runs our water tower, some of those things underneath that portion of our inland marine. We have to schedule those items. Two things happens there. It's even broader policies, it's broader perils. And we load the deductible to a thousand. Why we have it on inland marine. So but this is, this is something that's hitting up and down Main Street and, and, and other places. Um, institutional, uh, situations. I know in the medical field, there was a, a hub hit. Um, where all the hospitals and about nine, 15 blocks, us hospitals, 14 other types of providers included in that. Um, they tried that. They tried to hack that, you know, um, and, and it wasn't even a, it wasn't even to try to steal anything. They were just flooding the system, trying to make it crash. So I do know that hub was down for 36 hours. Uh, was it last week? Something like that. Those things are out there. So if you've been to our meeting. Open meetings act, that was addressed. So I'm not like, I'm putting out confidential information. That's quite, that's quite, I was very open in that meeting. So. Um, so it is in the area. It does happen to small town. And so I'm glad that we, I'm glad you guys chose to add that. I mean, even if it's as minimum as it is, uh, if you guys want to look at higher limits, we can do that down the road. Absolutely. So. The next section, more conceptual type stuff is the auto, the things going up down the road. Um, I put it in this page here just because it's basically going to lay out the basics here. We have a million dollars worth of liability coverage on our underlying auto policy. Which is not very much when it comes to in this day and age. I think a million dollars, but like I said, in this day and age, when it comes to bodily injury and property damage. Speak to your lawyer, that doesn't go very far. But we do have is umbrella behind us. And that's excess liability with another four million dollars, uh, per occurrence. Do we know why we have the four million dollar umbrella? Anyone that have a lottery, want to jump in? The Nebraska Tor Act, and make sure I say this correctly. The Nebraska Tor Act, uh, for political subdivisions. The maximum financial obligation is supposed to be per occurrence of five million dollars. So that's why you guys have met that requirement. Does that make sense with your limits? As long as it's covered whole, yes. There's your other part. Has to be a covered peril that, that is in there. So. You guys do have physical damage, but you don't have much for physical damage on vehicles. A lot of our stuff is liability only. Um, I saw the, I saw the sweet airport van out here with smashed windshield. I, I saw that as I was driving by and going. We don't have full coverage on that, so I kept on driving by. But, but I didn't, uh, I didn't have for, but we have physical damage. And, and the big ticket item is, is of course the garbage truck running up and down. Um, that is half of your premium almost. It's, it's, it's almost three thousand dollars a year. Insure that with physical damage. And we have a thousand dollar deductible on that. And the reason why I said the cost so much is to be. The other, the other item on there is our twenty seventeen freight liner, you know, is a big truck. And then of course we have, uh, the Sterling sewer and then we have our pickup. Our pickup's only eight hundred dollars a year for some coverage. Full blast on any of these, so there's no deduct on the guy. So if it has physical damage, your sweet van, everybody works out. So, what happened? Is that?
They didn't get the, the hook back down when they took the battery charger, took the charger off it and then it.
Flew and hit it, huh? That's like some scene of movies, right? And since it's driving down the road and way out.
Yeah, it would have been a shocker, I think.
Yeah, I would have been, yeah, well, just plain, I don't want to hurt her, right?
Yes, yes.
That's the main thing. So entertaining though. So, it happens. Seen in the movies, it's like, yeah, it happens. All right. General liability, uh, this thing, um. General liability functions here, we have a million dollar per occurrence, we have a two million dollar pop. Does that make sense? We have, that's our general aggregate amount. It runs from June second to June second every year. And our umbrella goes behind it. Um, so we back to that five million dollars in any one occurrence, no, we don't use the umbrella. And then we can get hit with the, uh, we, we still will have some left over. So say for example, just for example, we do something and we're negligent on the water splatter, right? And we get caught, and we're going to get caught and the civil prosecutors and they win a case. I'm not going to say that they were winning, I'm just going to say that's, that sounds it. Where you, where are you going to go? Where's that? That lands under the normal functions of, of your, of your municipality. You're going to get your million dollars there and then the umbrella will be another four, right? So you get your five million. Now. Once you use it here, it's kind of gone. Does that make sense? So that one per million will be gone. You still have another million instead you hopefully get your true to the ground. The rest of the policy career. Um, if you have multiple suits and, and they win the max judgments, you could run out of insurance. When that happens, these premiums will not be the same. They will be a lot more. We have to go buy more insurance during a policy period. Also, I bet if you exhaust the limits, when you get to the end of the two, um, those premiums, I'm sure will not be the same either. They will be, they will be astronomical. A couple of situations that we've had, um, uh, related to property damage, uh. Well. Now it's good time to talk about backup sewer. Um, that's the one that, did I talk about this? It's like municipality type things, the hammer on back of the sewer. Here's what happens, back of the sewer. The city has a function that performs, right? We have maintenance records. We are doing. Maintenance issues to try to get the, the sewer lines all clean and stuff like that. Cause I've had situations where we clean a line and we back it up into somebody's house. Technically, we're not, we're not negligent. We're doing our job. If we didn't clean out that line and then it backed up due to us not staying on a regular maintenance type situation, then you could be open on yourself for negligence. Here is my advice anytime someone calls about a backup of sewer. They should contact their homeowner's carrier first. If there's coverage there, I guarantee you their homeowner's insurance will pay the person who has the homeowner's claim. And if they think the city is negligent somehow, they will subrogate and they will get their money back and, and yada, yada, yada. So, um, even, even if the, the maintenance club. And it backs up in somebody's house that way, we're not necessarily negligent. Does that make sense? That's where, that's where the big misconception happens. And everybody wants to sue the city right away because, because we're negligent. No, technically, we're doing our job. By doing maintenance programs in some of those types of situations. So, uh, we did have a couple of those that got, um. Got denied. So I don't see, I haven't heard anymore on, on, um, mainly. When folks find out they don't have homeowner's insurance that covers back of the sewer, that's where the problem happens a lot of times because they don't have any other coverage. And, uh, that's important to the deal. And it's an optional coverage with a lot of homeowner policies. Um, there's a couple of carriers that do, that do include it, but not very many anymore. Used to all be in there, not anymore. So unfortunately, that's, that's the situation. Um. How is it rated? How do we get a rating? It's based on our population. That's kind of your exposure for a base rate. But then we also have things like a swimming pool. That is a different type of exposure than one of the ones that have. Um, here's where I get asked a lot of times, or I think the concern is related to alcohol out of the golf course. That's all underneath their alcohol license and stuff like that. We have to get liquor liability because we're not making money off. Does that make sense? Now, if we went selling or, or you got profits of any type of situation from that, then we would of course have liquor liability also. You guys talked about, this is a great time to talk about law, uh, law enforcement liability, right? You guys are just talking about providing your own police force. You talked about payroll, right? The cost, you have to have two guys, cars. Where would cars be now? We got to insure the cars underneath commercial lot, right? Your insurance cost is going to go up. You have to have, uh, law enforcement liability.
And, and the building.
Then who goes to help you? So, so building, we know structure, correct? All of their equipment, right? All of their stuff that goes with them that is what? Portable. We're talking firearms, if they don't have a bird calling. You're talking about all the other equipment, something like, going in underneath inland marine. Right? So you start, that's what I like about when some of these people bring up some of this stuff. It's, it's a great question. But the true cost is more than, if someone, someone will say, well, a couple, couple of guys, hundred thousand payroll. That's just the beginning. We've got a cost for property, we've got a cost inland marine, we've got a cost for auto, we've got a cost for extra liability. Um, so it's just part of the, just part of the calculation. I had, a village has, has asked me about that too, especially about this time of year when it's time to approve, uh. Contracts, that, that's just stuff kind of starting asking questions like that.
I think we got off, um.
Four percent?
Yeah.
Um, the next section is our football coverage. I know USFL is on now, so it's year round. So, no, that's a bad joke. Uh, linebacker is actually professionals liability and, and it's basically errors and omissions related to you folks on the council. Right? Also related to all these other committees. Underneath there too, there are branches of the city of Grant. Um, this is subject to a deductible. Your other live building coverage, um, I'm just trying to think here for a minute. The tractor does some work and it tears up something. Gotcha. We dump, I don't know. A bunch of, we, 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 we drain the water tower and ruin the leach field. There's no deductible on that. Does that make sense? Underneath here, there's going to be twenty-five hundred dollars. The first twenty-five hundred dollars of legal fees is going to be covered here. Does that make sense? So, and then we have a million dollar per, per limit. Umbrella goes over above this. So we got five million dollars per occurrence there too. But also, I mean, think of all your other subcommittees, they're like cemetery work. That's something, they get dragged into lawsuit. Um, even retired folks off of this board. Um, I've had situations where people have been. Turned into the advisory thing, there's an investigation, we run through court documents, there's legal defense for that, it's going to land right here. So. Valuations on stuff, good time. But you got legal counsel. That's the main thing, paid for. So that's why you buy insurance, you're transferring that risk. And here's the, here's the coverage I've been bopping about the whole time, the umbrella. We have four million dollar, uh, each occurrence limit. We have four million dollar aggregate amount. You can look at increasing that if you'd like, uh, see what the cost would be. Those are numbers, uh, that I should have brought. A good agent would have brought that with them. Like five million dollars or something like that, just with the times, with things keep going up. Where your coverage is low, something goes up also. So.
Is that something that you've been recommending?
Uh, we've seen people increase coverage. But here's the thing. By, by having the four million dollars, you guys are addressing your obligation of the Nebraska Tor Act. We're not doing extra on that, but we're, we're at least addressing that issue. So. Something to think about. I can show figures for that. Let you guys take a look at it. Not bad. No, okay, don't always look at it. It's all right. Insurance costs enough, right?
No, it's, it's just. Wednesday, he has a point of the year, that's usually the next price and they usually, you know, I understand.
Perfect. All right. Moving on, workers' compensation. Now, what I did do was provide breakdowns. And this goes right kind of handy with what you talk about law enforcement liability. You would have a hundred thousand dollars or more payroll. Which what they do is they, they, they put it under each specific code. And this is, this is something that we're going to suggest to Jesse every year to audit. So we make sure we put it in the right code, uh, box that's chargeable. Um. And if you will go to the backside of that page, I circled something on mine because I want to talk about your guys' experience. It's the second number down. You see where it says point eight nine experience mod? So what does that mean? Well, the standard raisin would be twelve thousand eight hundred and fourteen dollars. Okay, because the city of Grant has been, um, we have had claims related to workers' compensation. Uh, we actually have a, a basically eleven percent discount, if that makes sense. Uh, we're, we're operating better than the standard municipality. Now I will tell you, we did have a claim in twenty eighteen, it was forty-one hundred dollars. You know, without looking at it, I have to memorize. Uh, that was our last claim, not going to want it this time. How does that experience mod change? It changes by frequency. So we have a lot of little claims or we have one severe ones. When I brought, when I was brought in to take over this account, oh geez, seems like yesterday, I didn't have that as much for here, but, um. Uh, the, uh, the experience mod here was well over one. In fact, it was closer to one point two five. And a majority of our, well, we had two hundred and fifty thousand on claim. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you're only collecting ten, twelve grand a year off that. Insurance companies, as you're finding out. If you give them a dollar on your personal insurance and they're giving you a buck ten back, they're going to adjust that. And when they go to adjust that, they don't adjust it to a buck twenty. Like this comment, once they find out they get, they're going to go to two bucks to make up for their ten cents extra. So, so that is, um, on workers' compensation, good job, guys. That's where we're, we're working at a discount. And when we go to our spreadsheet, you'll see that that is one of the situations that. Because we've controlled the lost history and we have control over that lost history. We really do. Um, now accidents happen. A majority of your risk management related to employees, these guys have to go to class and schooling and, and you know what I mean? And, and for the most part, we are, we do a good job with our protection. Um, we haven't been subject to very many clients. Um, the weather, knocking down pavilions and, and beating the heck out of us with hail, we don't have a lot of control over that. So you're seeing those things adjust. That concludes employers' mutuals contract. Your property, your liability, your inland marine, your auto, your liability exposure, that all lands underneath there. Okay, um, that policy, um, if you're looking for numbers. You look at this sheet right here. And we like to break them down. It's on the left-hand side, it's the last key on your left-hand side of the folder. Um, that portion of time went up six thousand five hundred and twenty-nine dollars or nine point six percent increase. Okay, nine point six. Twenty percent of it is in property. The rest of them are basically flat and your work comp went down by five and a half. So that's how you raise work. So. Basically, what I'm trying to tell you is that our, the part that's, um. Our exposure stayed the same, our inland marine, uh, equipment, stuff like that, we really didn't add anything there, um. So, so, so our, our, our cost per hundred stayed the same. See how that's forty-nine oh five and it's forty-nine oh six? For the most part, those things stayed the same. Linebacker bumped up a little bit, umbrella bumped up a little bit, but those are six, five percent range. General liability went up two percent. The property, which we added over a million dollars in increase, fifteen percent increase due to valuation. And, and guys, it is the same. If you had to replace these windows right here. The cost last year versus this year is at least ten percent more. Does that make sense? That's not count labor and stuff. I mean, that, that's what I'm saying. That is where your increase came. Insurance companies, at the time, we. Like the substation, we, we had it at one point something million. We thought we had plenty of coverage. We started doing some research on that. I said, I just talked to Jason today. He said, yep, you'd be close to two million dollars to replace that. So the valuation they increased on that is probably forever. Um, unfortunately, we're in catch-up mode and, and, and with everything else right now. So. The next section is this policy right here and that is the, uh, um, that is the, uh. Airport insurance, sorry. Liability coverage out there and hangers keepers and all that, all that, uh, coverage. The air, aviation insurance, I don't know if anybody pilot here? Aviation insurance, anybody?
Yeah.
I should specialize in that. Premiums skyrocket. On average, they're really going to have twenty percent increase. That's where we're at, twenty-two percent increase. If we keep the same thing as last year. So I asked the gentleman about terrorism. So I think we bring this up every year. We have terrorism coverage on our, on our underlying policy. And out there, we've always had terrorism coverage. Um, he says most of his smaller municipalities anymore are. What do you think they're doing? They're cutting costs and they're dropping that coverage. And basically what the terrorism is, is you, you get put into, uh, the terrorism pool, the feds come in, your policy actually gets. Taking your claim to get taken care of by the, by the feds. But that is a fifty million dollar. Going to be, uh, fifty million dollar client is where, is where, is where you get access to the feds money. So. If the terrorist attack happens and you don't have that endorsement, may not work this way. That gets you into their fight if you need to be. So. His answer is most of his smaller municipalities now are looking to cut costs and that's ten percent of the premium, four hundred and something dollars. So it's up to you guys. Um. The other side you need here, that I put in there, first one of your different sections, I probably might should have landed in more detail. But, uh, like for example, your property section has a bunch of other things that are included. And when I say included, um, for example, we have coverage, if something happens to this building, we weren't able to operate here. While it's being rebuilt, we, we, excess rents, you know what I mean? Costs to set up business someplace else. You're going to have different hookup costs. You're going to have the electrical, uh, bill there, you're going to have electrical there. There's, there's incidental costs for that. There's also, um. Loss of proceeds or, 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 or related to that. Um, and then we have things like fifty thousand dollars worth of unreported buildings and structures coverage, um, a telephone pole. That we get charged for. It's, it's certain infrastructure type things like that, um, can be related to that. So. That's related to that. The next section is the auto. Uh, one of the things talking there is of course no deductible on glass. I don't know if I, I've stressed, I stressed that very well, but there is no deductible to that. Most of your home, most of your regular auto's policies, they don't have full glass. They'll fix it without calling, uh, if you have physical damage. You have physical damage coverage on, so we're talking about, let's talk about the garbage truck. I don't know what it costs to replace the windshield yet. Say something happens in, it's cracked, we need to have it replaced. We have a thousand dollar comprehensive deductible. Uh, with this endorsement, we are, we're not subject to the deductible. Does that make sense? So it allows us to carry higher deductibles for those types of clients. Uh, we did have an auto claim right before renewal last year. Do you guys remember that? The week, the week of when I came here, I think, we, we, we ran into a parked car with a garbage truck. So. That was seventeen hundred dollar boom right before. So it happens. I mean, that's because you buy insurance though, right? We're transferring risk. Um, and then underneath the liability section, um. It's got, it's got a broad, broader terms related to main insurance and stuff like that. So it's just included in the, it's kind of all, uh, broadened of coverage. So. Um. The numbers are the numbers. Um. EMC has a program where they take all of the, all of the, uh, villages, cities. Uh, municipality related things, they put them together in what they call a safety group. And we delivered a check down here. In the past, that check was rather healthy. Cause last year, this year, it's going twenty-one hundred dollars. That's right, twenty-one hundred bucks. Last year it was twelve thousand six hundred. Year before that was ninety-eight hundred, year before that was eighty-two hundred, year before that was sixty-eight hundred and it was forty-four hundred year before that. So over the last six years, EMC has kicked the dividend back to the city of Grant totaling forty-three thousand nine hundred eighty-three dollars and forty cents. So how does that work? Well, what they do is they take all of the municipalities, they put them together in one big safety group. And it runs a three-year loss history. And so then after, it takes all the premiums in there and then minus all, all the losses paid out. And if there's a surplus, that gets kicked back in the form of a dividend. Well, um, last year. Well, um, last year. That safety group suffered an over one million dollars worth of losses, one point zero four two in losses. Year before that, though, it was one point two four seven in profit, and year before that, it was two hundred thirty-eight thousand in profit, so. You take the three-year average, it's still, it was still profitable, and that's why it was a smaller dividend. What dropped off, though, was the year before that. Four years before that was one point two million dollars, so that's why we were at a twenty-three and a half percent dividend last year. Twenty-one the year before that. We had two really good years there, right? Pretty much next to each other. One of them fell off, and we replaced it with instead of a one point two million dollar gain. Then one million dollars loss, as the group as a whole, so, but they paid a dividend twenty out of the last twenty-six years. From twenty-fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, there weren't, but then there was a stretch there of about eight more years in a row, so, um. As of right now, and I can already pretty much tell you this, April twenty-second last year was not profitable for the state of Nebraska. Does anybody remember what happened? That's when we had the fires down by LC, but the entire state got bombed with that wind that went all the way across the state. Caused a ton of structure damage, and then there was just the assorted hails of that end of the state, along with high winds. Um, the thing, we're not talking about pivot coverage right now, right, Marlon? That industry is being, is being ravished with claims, so. After the last couple of years in pivot, so, um, unfortunately, right now Nebraska, and really, if you watch the news. It's, it's been kind of tough, and I'm not making excuses, but the increases are the increases. Um, we've done pretty much everything we can do. Uh, we, our value of our buildings are our value of our buildings. We have a swimming pool we added in the last couple of years, we've added buildings, uh, you know, we've done improvements, so our property premium is skyrocketing, so is our budget. I mean, here are ten-nine dollar blankets, so, you're worth a proper. Water tower about two hundred thousand still.
And what was that covered?
Yeah.
I don't like my water.
What can Jeff Steel's hometown agency crew do better for the City of Grant?
How much would it cost to replace the entire airport?
Ah, good question. I had that photo, Josh. That's one that I have, hold on. Did I have the, the airport? Bear with me. My copy, it's on my copy. There we go. Coverage out at the airport. Very much, two points, yep. Two point five, uh, four nine three four one nine.
Replace the entire airport?
Yep.
So, so if we lost entire airport terrorism, we wouldn't qualify for the federal.
No, no.
Okay. About a long shot.
Yeah, but that's what I'm saying, it's, it's a, it's a, it's, it's, it was two point three five seven. That's what I'm saying, it added a hundred ninety thousand dollars of coverage this last year, just because of the cost of the metal and possibly area out there. That's what I'm saying.
No, I get the cost, like, we have to lose there, we have to lose there for, what?
The federal program.
Many times?
Yeah.
Twenty times? Twenty times a recurring? Yes, with it. And then what are they recommending for, um, that terrorism, cyber terrorism, we're twenty-five thousand. What are you guys recommending for that?
I, you know, it's, it sounds bad, it's such a new coverage even to me. I, I have not worked much with it. Uh, we've got to put on the recommendations and kind of go from there. It's a hundred thousand something.
You know, I should collect some information, because that was a question I asked Jess, something you are building this from the west.
Oh, okay.
So technically, they carried a group of wests, all seen.
Gotcha.
It's gonna be more payroll or similar like that potentially, or.
What if they come in and, can they come in and take control of the water towers or the computer system?
Not right now, because it's not connected into the internet.
Not those stations, not anything like that? We can override still with manual? Yeah. That's type of stuff I would.
So, so it's more of that person to do again, in some sense, that if, it probably took more time if something happened or.
Downtime with administrative costs, or, or they, or they crashed the system, we gotta replace the system. You know, those types of things, but actually from a bodily injury or property damage, of gathering personal, private information, doesn't sound like we have much of an exposure there.
Never get rid of manual overrides, apparently, is what I was hearing.
Yeah, I, well, I was talking, you know, from the, from the health provider standpoint, that's what they were about, back to. Was actually going back to five, you know, they were out thirty-six hours there and starting to figure out how they were going to physically do it again. Well, I'm gonna say both, guys. Now, now, my situation, we're paperless. I know it doesn't look like it, but we are, we're paperless. And so we have electronic files that are stored offsite, backed up, the whole lot there. Can maybe, I, I, yeah, absolutely. I, I mean, anything, you know, so like I said, if, 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 if our internet goes down. Hometown agency, to be honest with you, I don't, you and Dale, we have to get it off the website, print a form now, right? Because we haven't done it, so, so we're stuck with eight hundred, now we're calling in physically, you have to do claims that way for us, or changes, or whatever. Um, thank God for cell phone, but I guess about, I don't know, I don't know. Just who knows? I guess, I don't know. We're all susceptible to it now, if you not get rid of manual. Didn't we used to have like, is that here, they used to have the backup tractor to run the water tower, where everything goes?
On the one wow.
Before we had the generator.
Yeah.
So when I, yeah, I remember that, I'm saying, we'd be talking about what happens at the water tower, you know, the power goes down to there, and they had a backup, uh. Tractor maybe, and get a fire back up. That's why adding the generator, right? There's another improvement that lasts. What, five, six years that we've added, so, and there's another fifty thousand dollars from the building, so, um, those types of deals, so. We appreciate your business. Um, thanks for keeping it local, and if there's anything we can do better, it's my cell.
Very much.
Thanks for doing.
That's pretty good.
I didn't go long, though, did I?
No, I thought it was just fun, right?
It's long.
It wasn't not, not for anyone.
Sorry. Do we need, they should have a motion to, if a group of the insurance.
I think action on presentation by hometown agency for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four insurance and crew.
Is Mary's time something?
Do I need to sign anything?
Not that, oh.
Okay.
Second.
Terry, you move. We accept the hometown agency for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four insurance needs. And Sam's second, any discussion? Sam, have you vote?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Motion carried. Alright, bills and claims, did you both have a chance to look at the bill presentation?
I moved to pay bill and claims amount of three hundred ninety-five thousand one hundred and twenty-one dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Sam moved, attorney's second. We accept bills and claims in amount of three hundred ninety-five thousand, one hundred and twenty-one dollars and eighty-eight cents. Any discussion? Terry, you had a vote?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well, motion carried. We are adjourned at seven fifty-eight.